Front row is open, Jackie.
Yeah.
Right in front of Tim.
Yeah.
I'm chair. We'll call to order the November 5th County Board Meeting.
Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen, here. Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Gepinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Present.
Keeping you guys guessing.
All right, approve or amend the agenda. Monty, I have one.
Just one change, Mr. Chair, for us, the Community Energy Transition Grant Announcement, can we please have that right after the agenda?
Okay, that was, uh, that was what I had too, so.
Good deal. Yep.
That's all we have, sir.
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meeting, so please obtain the Board's Chair consent before addressing the County Board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them vibrate. Thank you. Anybody here for open forum? Oh, okay. We got consent agenda items one through eight. What would you like to do?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to the energy grant.
Good morning.
Thanks, Amanda.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Sandy's gonna pass out a few letters for you this morning.
Good morning, Sandy.
Thank you.
I'll give you a minute to open those.
Oh, yeah. It's a very good letter.
I thought I'd deliver you a little bit of great news on today for a change, I guess. So, the Community Energy Transition Grant was a grant that I'm assuming you're aware of that applied for on behalf of the county. Part of that grant program, it was established under state statute through the Energy Transition Office at Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. There were approximately $10 million available for distribution through that transition grant in fiscal year '24 and '25. We're in fiscal year '25, so we're at the last leg of this transition grant opportunity. The purpose of it is that the Department of Employment and Economic Development is seeking qualifications, qualified responders to assist in eligible communities to address economic development, dislocation, and social impact associated with the closing of a local electric generating plant. You're probably wondering, or maybe you know, but maybe the public is wondering where that electric generation plant is located. And that is, it's the Granite City Power Generation Facility. It's a natural gas facility that we have in Benton County, kind of behind, if you're familiar with the Coburn's Warehouse in, on the east end of town of St. Cloud. And so that allowed us to be eligible to apply for this grant opportunity. Some of the eligibility requirements are the capital costs for public infrastructure necessary for economic development. The project, the County Road 29 and 8 extension project, was part of an economic development project that is, that the county has been working on for many, many years. And part of that project required additional funding needed to move two power lamp poles from Excel Energy. So, knowing that and knowing that the county did not necessarily budget for those funds, we applied for this grant to help assist with the cost of the relocation of those funds, or relocation of those poles, excuse me. So, your letter indicates that we received the full request of $1 million for our, our grant application. And this was certainly a very lengthy grant application. We've been working on it with the Energy Transition Office since January of this year. We actually made the application and submitted the application in September, on September 10th of this year, and we just received notice on Thursday. So, it was really hard secret to keep because we've seen a lot of you over the past few days, but we're really excited and delighted that we received the funding for this project. So, as we move forward with the extension project, this will provide the funding you need to relocate those poles, actually. So, and part of that project, I just want to recognize the people that provided letters of support, because part of the grant application, when you're writing any grant application, it's really, really nice to have letters of support from our local community. And I just want to recognize the people publicly that supported our grant application. On top of Benton County, of course, Senator Howell, Representative O'Driscoll, Senator Eric Putnam, Representative Perryman, Mark Ebner is the Minden Township Chair, Michael Williams, Stearns County Administrator, Greg Felber, Sherburne County Board Chair, Kurt Huntsinger, Mayor of City of Sock Rapids, Ryan Daniel, CEO of St. Cloud Metrobus, Natia Baumann, GSDC President, of course, OSAT BEP, supported the grant application and the project, Anna Gruber, City Administrator of City of Saratoga, Rian Danielowsky, Policy Board Chair of the St. Cloud Planning Organization, Brian Gibson, Executive Director at the St. Cloud Area Planning Organization, Brian Myers, the C.R., St. Cloud Airport Authority Board Director, Brian, I'm sorry, Chip Sexton, the Senior Director of Manufacturing at National Vision, Matt Gaffey, CEO at St. Cloud Industrial Products, and Dave Kleis, Mayor of St. Cloud. So, all of those folks supported our grant application, so if you do see them, please extend a huge thank you for this application and the grant that we received from the state. So, just wanted to share that with you. Do you have any questions as we move forward with the grant, the follow-up, anything like that?
From my standpoint, I can't thank you and your team enough. This is, this is money that is gonna be definitely used very well, and it's not gonna be levy money anymore.
And it would have been levy money prior to this.
Yes. This is, uh, this is a-
Alter our road project somewhere down the line.
Yeah, kind of like a big winning lottery ticket here.
Thank you, Amanda. Mr. Chair, I don't know about you, but I think it's appropriate. I mean, I'd love to get this in the paper with Amanda, holding the grant, the application, if Tim's willing to take a picture. I mean, this is big stuff. This is a million dollar grant that we got, that, like she said, this is good news.
Another thing from BEP.
Yeah.
Correct, and another reason why we support BEP so heavily. We thank you much, very much, Amanda and Sandy, everybody on BEP Board.
Tim, is that something you're willing to do? I understand. I'm not expecting it to be, what do you mean?
To get it in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Beth has her camera, though. We can- Yeah, fine, whatever.
We can take a picture and then we can send it to Tim.
Great, sure. No, that's fine. I'm okay with that, I just don't want to miss it.
Can Sandy, can Sandy come on down then?
Yes, and-
Sandy and Amanda and Pam?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, everybody.
I mean, as a board, we'd never even heard about this until Amanda came forward.
No, this has completely come from Amanda and-
This is BEP. Right here, front and center. Front and center.
I also should recognize too, Chris Bird, the county engineer, has played a huge part, huge part, in securing, you know, the grant as well. So, we've been working together over the last few months to really secure this and, and provide the write-ups that needed. So, I just want to recognize Chris too, because he's here in the audience and he should be-
Come on up, Chris.
Yep, come on, Chris, you can use the ladies.
I wonder, should we go down there with him?
Sure. Stand back, behind him?
Yeah. Let's come down there.
I bet she's, how about you, you switch places, Chris? Yeah, there you go, there you go.
All right. We'll move on to employee recognition. Monty?
Yes, Mr. Chair, a lot of folks getting recognized, that's great. Several nominations were received and considered by our Employee Committee and recommended for recognition today. How about we start with Property Management, and that was nominated by IT. Steve is here. You bet.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning. As you know, we had a large fiber project in between all five of our buildings this year, from May to September. Weather was definitely a factor. Property Management, they stepped up and helped us in ways that we didn't ask for. They were giving construction guidance, escorting vendors, working with them in the data rooms. They stayed on top of it, got it done. We were short-staffed during that time, so it was a very welcomed help. They were so on top of it eventually that I was, the vendors were just calling me with updates and asking some technical questions, so it was kind of nice to be able to assist where I was in more expertise than not. Learned a lot along the way as well. We've always had a good working relationship with Property Management, and it just highlights how successful our county can be when departments and people work together. So, I just wanted to thank all the PM staff for all the help with us, and I think it's well deserved.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, so you have to come up for a picture and presentation. Board Chair or the whole Board, however you like to do it, all right. Everyone has to come up.
Just me?
You can handle it.
Everybody has to come up.
Might as well stay there.
Jeff, we really appreciate all your work. Thank you again.
Thanks, Jeff. All right.
Jeff, thank you.
All right. Next is-
He's got a big day today. He's running for Buckman City Council.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff's got a big day today, he's running for Buckman City Council, I see.
All right. Next is, would be Emily and Shannon, as nominated by Charlene. Is Charlene here? Is Charlene here? There she is. Coming up, Charlene.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to first thank the Employee Quarterly Recognition Committee for choosing Emily and Shannon as the third quarter recipients for the Inspirational Leader Award. I'd like to tell you why I nominated Emily and Shannon for this award. The Sheriff's Office, especially the jail, has been trying to fill open positions for a long time. Emily and Shannon hold numerous testing dates and interview dates each month, as well as contacting those individuals who applied for the open positions but did not sign up or show up for testing. At one point, we even joked that we would borrow Shannon the transport van to go pick up people who didn't show up for testing. Emily and Shannon have been available for all questions, even if they don't know the answer, they take the time to find those answers for us or reach out to other counties to find out what they're doing. Emily has worked beyond her normal scheduled hours to make sure she is getting back to others in a timely manner. Because of their dedication to Benton County and their coworkers, we continue to fill open positions in the jail that are desperately needed. Even with the added responsibilities and duties they've taken on in the absence of the HR Director, both have positive interactions with their coworkers, are always friendly, and take the time to help those in need. Emily and Shannon are shining examples of what I consider to be a leader, and I'm proud to call them coworkers. Thank you.
You guys have been stars during all of this.
That's right.
As everybody knows, we've been without a HR Director for a long time now.
Yeah.
We appreciate it very much. Or, anything to say?
Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you very much for everything you do.
All right, thank you. Shannon and Emily, thank you. All right, and our final nomination was for Sandy Schoburg, and I believe Will, Will is gonna speak?
Adam.
Adam, sorry. Adam.
It's interchanged.
He had a moment there, didn't he? Adam.
The man with many words.
I guess I don't know.
Yeah. It's gonna be a while.
Well, thank you for the time today. When we talk about different words to describe someone who's in this role, you can use the word manager, supervisor, boss, director. All those words can be used to describe someone who's in a role to oversee the people that work for them. Those are all good words, but I really think that the primary word that we can use for Sandy is leader. When you talk about someone who's in a leadership role, you talk about someone who not only leads by the words that they say, but more importantly, the actions that they take on a daily basis. This isn't just the large gesture actions of making change within an agency, but it's the everyday actions of walking into the office and interacting with the people that work with them and for them. In Sandy's 35-plus years, I've been a very small part of that, being under her leadership. But you look at some of the changes and things that have happened over time. Sandy led us through the COVID change and all of those challenges that we faced, led us through a employee change, as we look at moving from in-office work to out-of-office work and home office work and things like that. I think one of the things that exemplifies good leadership is balance. Sandy balances accountability with also understanding. Sandy doesn't just know what to look for and how to motivate people and, and get them to be better. She also takes the time to know the people that work for her and with her. Sandy treats the people that she works with like people, which is another really good indicator of a solid leader. And she really knows a lot about who they are and what's going on in their lives, which I think is really important to understand, all the way from the management supervisor group to every employee that works within the agency. So, not only having a working knowledge of the programs, but also having a working knowledge of the people, which is really important. So, with that said, I think the management team for, for Human Services really felt like we wanted to recognize all of the time and work that Sandy's been, that she's put in. And, and it was all, a huge example of that was some of the recent challenges with a director that came in that Sandy worked with and mentored and trained, and really just showed us all what it means to be knowledgeable about the program, but also have a, just the support of everything that's going on. So, we just appreciate all Sandy's done for us, we appreciate everything that she's doing for the agency, and I just wanted to recognize her for everything she's done.
Still on eggshells? As everybody in the room knows, we've been without a Director of Human Services as well for about the same time, so we appreciate everything you've done. I know that Commissioner Heinon and Johnson are working on options moving forward. We thank you again for everything.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
It is very refreshing to see everybody in here supporting those coworkers and, and everything.
Yep, it is.
Monty?
You ready to move on?
We are ready to move on. Thank you again.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm here to present the recommendation of the Human Services Director Selection Committee regarding the appointment of a Human Service Director. That committee consists of Commissioner Heinon, Commissioner Johnson, and Human Services Director of Stearns County, Melissa Huberty, and of course, myself. So, we'd like to recommend the appointment of Sandy Schoburg as our Human Service Director effective today.
I'm looking for your motion.
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any, any thoughts?
Mr. Chair, this has been a long struggle for over a year, and she's fulfilled this position as Deputy Director slash interim, without giving her the interim, and I think it was well deserved.
Absolutely. I wish we could have did these reversed.
Yes.
So, I couldn't agree more. So, thank you again, Sandy, for everything you've done. Thank you to your team. Let's, we look forward to this.
We do.
Commissioner Pop?
Congratulations.
Anything?
Yep, no, we long overdue.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Sandy.
Thank you all.
Okay. Ready to move on?
And all the room cleaned up.
We are ready. Okay, great. So, Mr. Chair, this is essentially the final ARPA agreement we, we have to consider with our area cities. And the Board previously agreed to allocate a certain amount of remaining ARPA dollars to the City of Sock Rapids for water sewer projects. So, I drafted an amendment, sent it to the city for their consideration. What I did in this original amendment was essentially divide the dollars into two distinct projects, actually, excuse me, three. The first was $180,000 for the new residential lots. The second was water and sewer associated with the Roundabout, the northeast and northwest corners. And the third was associated with the 29 extension. So, essentially broke it into three pieces. The city would like us to combine this into two projects, the first being the 180 for the residential lots, and the second being lumping the other two together into one lump amount. The comment I got from the City of Sock Rapids, particularly Todd, was that, well, you know, we only have an estimate for what the Roundabout water sewer will cost. It may cost more than the current estimate. They prefer the contracts set forth one lump amount for those two last projects. What I have in your packet then really essentially is two versions. The first version would be the one the city wants, which is, again, lump sum, and it's labeled as city's preferred version. And basically, it's, it's section 4.1, and it identifies the 180, and it puts the remaining $795,000 for those two remaining projects, the Roundabout and then the 29 extension. The, the proposed version I have labeled breaks them out as separate projects. My comment that I made back to the city was, my impression is that the Board, you know, wants to place a high priority on the 29 extension, and we want to make sure there's sufficient resources left over to take the sewer, water sewer as far as you possibly can take it with the 29, and you don't want to see it all getting eaten up by the other project. So, so you have, again, what I felt was the preferred version from the county. So, I needed, I guess I need at this point, your consensus and direction is what, what version should I take back to the city as the county's position on this issue? That's, I guess that's the question I have for you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Heinon?
Excuse me. I personally prefer the county's proposed version. My, the whole idea is to get water and sewer at least over the river.
Yes.
Okay. That's been the main goal, and we've shared that with the city, that if it does not get across the main, you know, that river and tied it to our project with the 29 loop, they would be on the hook in the future for everything that we've done already, you know, with natural resources, with all these other agencies, you know? So, it's always been a goal of myself to make sure that this gets across that river. And we have no idea how far that 600,000 is gonna go.
Yeah.
But we have an idea that most of it will take us across the river. And that's my idea, is that we go that direction.
I agree with that, because our, our, our goal is to, to get water sewer underneath the 29 extension, and we need to get it past that river. That way it's-
Which river are we talking about?
It's just past the Villager Creek side. There's a creek down there.
They call it a creek, but it's a river.
But getting it, getting it past that will, will open up development in the future for a lot lesser of a cost.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, the way I'm understanding it, though, is it seems like because of the city's proposal, they're in disagreement with that.
Well, I think they want to use it for other things.
Yes.
That wasn't our discussion, no.
No.
Correct.
That-
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think, I don't care if we use the money on the 29 extension if, if it all goes to that, but I don't want to leave it to the City of Sock Rapids to decide where to use the money. They get it across the Roundabout, and a large portion should be up that road to make sure we have future development there, because we're after, you know, we've already given them $179,000 for future development.
Yeah.
And I think that we have to hold them a little bit to the fire, that they do what we intended it to do.
Yeah.
I can add, Mr. Chair, is the estimated cost of the Roundabout water sewer was $162, that was an estimate from June of this year. So, hopefully, it's not too far off the mark.
Right.
And this does leave the city 170. I believe if I, in the version that I, one, one thing I did want to point out, Mr. Chair, so this is again, in the county proposed version under section 4.1, it says, the last sentence that's in yellow, "The county and city agree that said project costs are estimated and may be adjusted with the concurrence of the county." So, for example, there's a 170 set aside for Roundabout water and sewer. What if it costs 180?
Yeah, then-
Then we'll talk.
Then we're fine, yes.
We'll talk. We'll talk. And the Board may say, fine, okay, we'll go 180.
Yeah.
So, there is that wiggle room to make an adjustment with counting concurrence.
Right. And I do want to make it known, I don't think the City of Sock Rapids is disgraceful or anything like that. I, I, I think everybody's thanking, you know, the government and ultimately us for directing money to them. It's just a matter of, I think they don't want to fall short- It's just a matter of I think they don't want to fall short on a few on their end to where it's like us, you know, our levies are set, right? How do you come up with that money?
Yeah, well, I think one thing that the city's got to realize is that we're one of the few counties that have given our ARPA money back to cities. Most counties spent it for other entities within the county. And Benton County was good enough to be there to try. We have the bigger picture with Amanda. We have the bigger picture that development spurs tax base, tax base will help everybody in the county. We I mean, there's very few counties that give it to their cities, let me tell you. You can you got to look hard and long.
Well, it's not only the counties, the city's got monies to money too.
And they got money too on top of it, right?
And they could have directed it either towards projects or and or to a loss of revenue.
Right.
And a lot of them directed their money to loss revenue.
And and the other part is that some of the townships gives their money back to us to be stewards of their money.
Right.
And I don't think they want to they would say, well, give it to Stock Rapids, let them do what they want or give it to Rice and let them do what they want. I don't think that would sit very well.
No.
No, and and Mr. Chair, I think to our point before, as we've had multiple discussions about that was the county's goal to move forward on that area.
Yeah.
And in the end of the day, it still promotes and pushes Stock Rapids.
Correct.
I mean, if we wouldn't have got the grant, we might have to grab the whole nine hundred thousand back and put it for that.
That that grant is definitely a blessing and a disguise.
Oh, my God, yeah.
You know, and and in that roundabout portion of what they're going to do, I mean, that benefits them in the future too. Okay, for both corners for commercial, you know. And and my main goal was to make sure we had enough money to get across that river slash creek.
But with that one hundred and sixty-two that Monty was talking about, which we allowed one hundred and seventy in there, basically that gives us development on both corners, on all corners of that.
For commercial, correct, yeah.
It's Monty's proposal about coming to, I mean, if you're talking around short, let's talk about it.
Yeah, we we can do something there.
Right. I mean, if they don't feel that they can come talk to us about it now, after we've done done what we've done, then maybe this partnership's not very good.
Yeah, no, I I I don't think they're going to have a problem with that. I think they're just they're they're scared about that roundabout coming in more because those were numbers just basically from, you know, engineers bullet, you know.
Well, we have that resolved in the county's proposal.
Yeah, exactly.
I think I understand your consensus.
All right. Monty, if you need help with that, I'm sure Commissioner Hyman or myself have no problem.
Thank you.
With you or talking to them.
Okay. Last item, Mr. Chair, I have is the annual AMC Annual Conference Voting Delegates. Really haven't brought this to you all in a long time. I thought probably we should review it. Uh we're allowed eight voting delegates to the AMC Annual Conference. Obviously, in the past, it's always included the county board and your county miniature has also been listed there. A long time ago, the county attorney was added to the list. So I wanted to just wanted to ask you all, do you have any suggestions for the eighth slot? Or do we want to put Kathy there as the county attorney or whoever else you wish to?
Tim. My my point is Kathy would take over Carl's spot.
Yeah.
Maybe to fulfill this, we have our elected officials on here and it's the auditor treasure.
Auditor treasure.
Would make sense to me.
I don't think Tim would want to do it, right?
I was I looked at a little I thought maybe we look for a long-term employee, somebody that's been here a long time.
Could do that too.
I mean, my thought was Roxanne's been here a long time. She knows the county.
Yeah.
Pretty well.
Or Chris.
Or Chris Bird, yep. I Chris, do you do you have within AMC, you have the engineers, do you get a vote on their stuff, right?
Uh I think that we just are technical representatives and recommend things. I don't think we actually vote, so.
I'm open for any of the three myself.
You know.
You don't have to have an eighth slot, but you you certainly can if you want to.
Yep. Well, and Chris is down there anyway.
Chris is usually there, right?
Yeah.
So we had Chris, Mr. Bird.
Would you like to?
You okay with that, Chris? We had you as a voting delegate?
Doesn't mean you have to be there.
Oh, well, yeah, I'll be down there. I'm actually supposed to be giving a presentation in one of the sessions anyways.
Yep, I already got it highlighted.
Yeah.
So as you know, this means like if you when you go to policy committee means you get to vote on platform.
Right.
And then it's brought to the full body, you can vote. I would imagine you also vote on who the officer is going to be for AMC. There's several different votes that occur, right?
Well. He has been down there.
Right.
Multiple years. Took a break on one, but.
Rub it in, rub it in.
I like how you put that, Mr. Chair.
So we're going to update Kathleen and then add Chris.
Yeah.
Could you give me a motion on that then?
Yeah.
Also move that we updated to Kathleen and add Chris Bird.
Second.
Hey, we got a motion and a second. Any other communication on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Welcome aboard, Chris.
Yep.
Okay. Move into George. Great billboard, too.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here this morning to get the board approval for a resolution for Operation Green Light. Actually, you have to approve it because it was on the local news yesterday morning that you were going to approve it. But it was on there. So Operation Green Lights, it's a nationwide effort. This is the third year it's been going on between the National Association of Counties, the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, Association of Minnesota Counties, all support. And it's it's a it's a goal is to show support, raise awareness, and thank our veterans for their service. Basically, we put green lights on things that we can and shows a visual signal to veterans, we we support them. So looking for approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for the resolution supporting Operation Green Light.
I'll I'll second it.
Thank you very much.
We got a motion and a second. Commissioner Slung in.
On the whereas is number three and four, um there's a couple of spelling errors, it looks like. It said it should be should be sacrifices. And American Legion.
Okay. We'll correct that.
Yeah.
That was it.
Thank you.
George, great job on this. I think I think they took it for granted that we would pass this and they were right.
Thank you to property management again, because I'm sure they're the ones.
I I I know, I was kind of I was driving to work yesterday and I was heard that I said, whoa, ahead of the meeting, pretty good. Thank you very much.
Well, we we thank you for everything. So with that, we I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again.
Thanks, George.
Okay. Chris, seeing as you have nothing, we'll move on.
Are we ahead of schedule or behind?
Way ahead.
Wow, we're a little bit behind.
Well, I will do my best to be brief, uh but you know how that goes. Uh the first item I have before you is to consider a resolution to transfer excess municipal state aid dollars into our regular stated account. And I just want to bring this up. I I created a little graphic maybe to help illustrate what what I'm trying to accomplish here. As you know, each year we get an allotment of funds to maintain and reconstruct our state aid roads. Some of our state aid roads are within cities under five thousand population. And and so those funds are supposed to be set aside um to use only on those those roads. So you think of the city of Foley, Gilman, we've talked a lot about the projects coming up in Gilman, and those state aid routes in Rice. Adobe does not seem to be cooperating with me. So um there we go. So to determine how much state aid funding each county gets of eighty-seven counties, there is a CASA distribution formula. Ten percent is divided equally amongst eighty-seven counties. So in twenty twenty-five, that's a little over six hundred thousand dollars each county gets. Then ten percent of that formula is based on vehicle registration. Thirty percent is based on the county lane miles. And then fifty percent is based on construction needs. And so that construction needs, it doesn't actually reflect actual construction costs. It's kind of a twenty-five-year look back of what it's been costing to construct projects and it's averaged out around your your surrounding counties and things like that. I just bring that up because once we get to a point where we have more than five years allotment in our municipal construction account, we start getting a needs deduction. It's almost as if the formula says, we've been giving you this money every year, you haven't been spending it, so you must not need it. But statute and state aid rules allows us to transfer that excess over to our regular construction. And so our intent for that municipal construction was use it towards the CASA three and five reconstruction projects that we would have been spending next year. And as you know, that project's been delayed. We potentially face this needs deduction, meaning we could receive a little bit less the following year of state aid money. So to avoid doing that, um like I said, state aid rules allows us to transfer that excess into our regular construction account. And my intent is just to keep it in that CASA regular construction account until we need it for the Gilman construction project. So it's a simple resolution and it references the statute there, one sixty-two point zero eight subdivision four three D where it allows us to transfer that. So we could transfer up to the excess of two years allotment. Um and that's where that dollar amount comes from, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. So I'm recommending that we transfer the maximum that the rules will allow us just because the build year for the Gilman project is kind of in flux. We know it's definitely not going to be in twenty twenty-five. We're not sure if it's in twenty twenty-six or probably later. So to avoid having to come back next year to do the same thing, that's why I'm recommending that six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar amount. And once again, the intent is it'll just sit there in that stated account until we're ready to to pay for the Gilman reconstruction project.
Mr. Chair. So Chris, this money is set aside just for the Gilman project. And after two years, will you have to come back if that project's not in progress?
No, it gets it gets a little bit more confusing after that. So the rules as it is now, we can keep up to five years allotment in there and not face a needs deduction. But once you get to that maximum of five years in that account, uh then you can transfer all the way up to two years, meaning you have to relieve two years allotment in that balance. Got it. It's even complicated further. We could transfer all of it if we wanted to, but we have to have public hearings in our small cities to make sure that they're okay with that. So the the idea is if we transfer all the excess of two years allotment, we can the next three years, we could still let money build up in that account again and not have to do this this action again.
Commissioner Pop?
So the six hundred and seventy-six thousand. Could that be, could we take it and use it somewhere else if we wanted in that period of time?
We could. We could throw it to any of our other CASA projects.
So if if Gilman comes back and says this is not going to happen in twenty-six, twenty-seven, maybe twenty-eight, we could use that money somewhere else and then replace it with our own money eventually, right?
We could, yeah. The the intent was try to maximize, I think, state aid money for those projects.
Yes.
But but yeah, that gives us some flexibility. If we transfer to the regular construction account, we've got, I don't remember, I don't know, ten miles or so in the small cities. So two hundred and ten miles of CASA roads, we could use that money elsewhere. It would just force us at that build year to come up with those funds. So that's why at this point, the way the five-year plan is adopted and designed, um we would just need to leave that sit in that account to make it available for Gilman sometime.
By doing it this way, this this keeps our state aid coming in.
Right.
And it's banking what we already have.
But I'm looking at, you know, down the road. If Gilman, if we can't get that Gilman thing rolling eventually, we're going to have to use it.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, this is a just a basic transfer. We still have the ability to use those funds.
Correct.
How you how we all see we need to in the CASA areas.
That's that's right. The the act of doing this, we can we could spend it on regular construction or regular CASA miles. We can spend regular CASA miles on our municipal. We just can't you without doing this transfer, we can't draw from our municipal account on the rural CASA miles.
When you say regular construction, you're talking CASA or municipal, not county roads, right?
Correct, yeah. So even the CASA, our CASA account um is divided into regular CASA and municipal. So it's it's recognizing that we've got some small cities that are not, they don't have direct access to the the gas tax money, if you will. So we have some state aid highways through Foley and Gilman and Rice to give us some funds to reconstruct those roads someday.
Mr. Chair, so an example, Chris, say we were doing what, let's use county road four.
Mm-hmm.
And we were going to do that whole road. And could you take a part of that money and put it towards that project because it's from municipal municipality?
Correct, yeah. So yeah, CASA four through Foley starts at Highway twenty-three and then goes all the way out to Malaxi. If we did that all as one project, we could pay for the portion just within the city limits from that municipal account and pay for the rest of it out of the regular construction account.
There's a lot of options.
Yeah, it gives us lots.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the resolution as presented. I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other communication on this?
And I think, you know, we should make the comment that we're still deeply embedded in Gilman of getting this done.
Yes.
We have to protect the money.
Yeah. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Great, very good. Moving right along. Let's talk about capital funding. Capital projects take a lot of, well, capital. And takes a lot of work at the state capital with the O L S. The previous two legislative sessions, we've been very fortunate to have bills introduced um that would provide funding for some county highway projects. CASA one, the Mayhew Lake Road, uh study that recommended the four lanes and roundabouts at major intersections and some some funding, additional funding for the CASA twenty-nine extension. So I've attached here those draft bills. I see that we've been very fortunate to have those introduced, but we have they had not made it completely through that legislative process where they got included in a in a large omnibus funding bill or, you know, passed on their own to provide funding to get the governor's signature. So through some of my channels, through MICA engineers and through the County Engineer Association, we keep hearing that twenty twenty-five, there's there's an appetite for a bonding year maybe. So um so that's why this is this is being brought up. We were actually, Monty and I were just approached by one of the legislative aides of, was it Representative O'Driscoll?
I don't recall, Chris, yeah.
But uh asked was directly asking us if we were interested in doing something similar again. So that's why we're have this up for discussion if you would like to pursue legislation.
Remember the person saying sooner is better than later to get it submitted, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll ask the dumb question. Why wouldn't we pursue it?
Right.
I mean, what's the downside?
Um, well, yeah, we could always to get it actually through across the finish line, it does take time and resources. I mean, Commissioners and Monty, we were down at the capital at least one time. I mean, that doesn't seem to 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 get it. That's that's the downside would be the time and effort to get it actually passed or included in some kind of large transportation funding bill.
But with that, I would say that the time that's been committed by commissioners and staff.
Right.
Has had good payback in the past.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. That is that is that is correct. And the only way this is going to get CASA one is going to get reconstructed is funding.
Yeah.
Outside of the county.
Yeah.
And we have to keep moving forward. We have to do what we can to try to get funding.
And the other thing, what, we're going to have forty-some new legislators in St. Paul and they're all going to have to be educated and um there'll be new chairs of different committees that, you know, you're going to have to speak on.
I I think this is a no-brainer.
I do, and I think with our proposed budget for next year and bringing in a little help for Chris with ditches, we can get him back into where we need him.
Yes.
Areas to be helping.
Yeah.
Totally agree. You know, we we've put a lot of legwork into all of this stuff in the last two and a half, three years, you know, by going to DC, doing everything we can for funding. We've got to keep moving forward. We just can't stop.
Yeah, we're embedded enormously on this and.
We're recognized too.
Yeah.
They actually know who Benton County is now.
Well, and that happens because we continue to pursue it, right?
Yep.
But once you, once these visions get accomplished, it it is going to see Benton County explode. Because the building isn't happening in in Stearns County, you know how they build south and west? It just isn't happening. I I really truly believe that once this corridor gets put in there and this this twenty-nine extension goes around the school, I think it's going to explode in that area. Senator Howes, LA.
Okay, that's where it came from. So, yeah, they referred that to us. In past years, there's been an actual application process that would come out in June or July of the year. That didn't happen. But I I'm encouraged the fact by, yeah, by the legislative assistant reaching out to us, hey, are you interested? So that means the senator is interested in authoring a bill, so.
I think everybody sees the issues we have in front of the school right now. Whether that gets us all the way down to twenty-three or not, that's that's another story. But but if we can get that segment between the twenty-nine roundabout to to three, that's going to alleviate a lot. three, that's gonna alleviate a lot of things. And, and it's gonna be probably the, probably the most expensive area too to go. So, you know, I think, I think we gotta keep on the, the raise grant. We gotta keep going on there. The more, if we can get the first segment through the state and do the raise grant for the rest, that would.
Well, and I'd hate to drop the ball if we have legislative assistants reaching out and saying, hey, you still wanna go after this?
Yeah. I think what really pays off is, I think, our staff and Commissioners have been in front of legislators, both locally and nationally, on all these projects. And it, and pays for Chris to be going too. I mean.
Absolutely.
I mean, they listen to us Commissioners, but, but they really listen to the people that know what's going on when, when it comes to the roads and everything like that. We're out there begging, we'll do that. But.
I, I totally agree, you know, and the school district has been a very good supporter of this too.
Absolutely.
They've been doing very well, supporting this project with the legislators and everything too. So it's just not us, you know, we've got other partners involved.
I don't wanna get too far off subject, but has Brad been able to attend some of that stuff?
He attends whenever he can and, and he's very boisterous.
Yeah.
He, he is awesome. I mean, as somebody that, that has been on the fire department for quite a while, we continue to have accidents along that way. And, uh, you know, one of the things that I've, I've said in every meeting, matter of fact, it was just the other day, I actually did CPR on a fatal, on, right on one of those , uh, roundabouts, and it's not fun, right in front of the school, so.
So we just need consensus, Mr. Chair, or?
Uh, yeah, I, that's, yeah, consensus would be, I think, sufficient to pursue this. I mean, I think the language, maybe we look at the numbers, cause if we're one year out, inflation always hits this when you, when you can't build it when you want to.
Well, you look at just the roundabouts, in, the two roundabouts that would be on that would be probably four million, four and a half?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, yeah. And, and one thing we've learned through the process is, uh, we've been asked to be prepared to do it in phases. We, we know the whole length of that Mayhew Lake Road study was like an eighteen to twenty million dollar project plus engineering on top of that.
Yep.
And, and, you know, just to be realistic, we've, we've been told, be prepared to break it up into phases. So like this, what's on the screen now is actually, you know, as it's listed, phase one of a much larger project. There's, there's multiple reasons for that. Then it opens us to come back and, you know, the next time is like, well, yeah, you did give us money, but remember, it was only one phase of a multi-phase project.
And again, you're talking CASA twenty-nine to CASA three.
Yep, right in front of the school.
Yep. Yes, yeah, that would be the first phase.
Yes.
So, um.
Mr. Chair, Chris, all's I ask is that we update our numbers because the numbers that we put in prior to this versus now are gonna be totally different with construction costs and everything else going up.
That's, that's right, yeah. E- each year, we learn a little bit more, we have, you know, more bids to look at to get better estimates and stuff. So, yeah, that's, that's a good comment to make sure we've.
I'm, I'm sure this'll come up in Commissioner Communications, but, you know, one of the things that was brought up yesterday is that the government looks for a fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
You know, ask. So maybe these numbers aren't far off, maybe, maybe it could actually be lower if they're really looking for a fifty-fifty, but five million dollars is a lot of money for a county to come up with.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
So.
I would like to think it's a lot of money for us, but in the total state's budget, it seems like it's just a drop in the bucket, right?
Yeah, for, for the state, but for us to come up with.
Yeah.
A match of a fifty percent.
Local match?
You know, what's nice about that, there's grants for all of that too, for our local match and that, that we've learned yesterday.
So.
So.
Yeah, so I guess if there's a consensus to at least pursue that, we can do that. And then, you know, as, in the coming months, we could talk about strategy on how to approach that. Um, I think our representatives have been more than happy to meet with us and throw support at it. It's just when it gets to those committees, um, they're only just a handful of votes in a, in a larger committee now sometimes, so.
As one of the representatives told me that, uh, they got the, they got the bus and then they got the trailer, and right now, we're on the trailer.
At least we're being tagged along.
I will happen to be with that individual tonight, so.
Okay.
All right, that's sufficient for my needs. Um, it does look like I have, uh, an engineer update, if you'd like to hear one, or we can, that, so. Um, our County Road fifty-three project in Oak Park is completed. We actually heard some good things from township supervisors since it's right there on their town hall, uh, where Maywood Town Hall meets, so they, they, they like that. Um, our County Road seven project, we had an initial, um, uh, completion date of last Friday to open up the first, or at least what they opened up, the first mile and a half had to be up to gravel before November first. They, they didn't meet that, but they chose to go ahead and try opening up, uh, another, another half mile since we were having good weather. So we're working with them on that completion date and they're, they're working through that, that really tough section, um, right by that, that duck slue, yeah. Yeah.
Sunlight.
So they're gonna continue where they were going to stop?
Yeah, they're gonna try to get some of that done this fall still, because as you think about the winter, next spring, it could be months before you even get in that area to dry out enough. So we've still got dry soil, even with the recent rain, the soil is still very dry. Um, the water, the water table in the, in the soil is probably lower than it's been in maybe a decade or so. So, um, there's probably no better time, even though it's not ideal, still not ideal conditions, so. On the maintenance side, we've got all of our trucks saddled up. Um, we were out plowing, uh, last week on Halloween, so everybody was getting kind of excited because we were, we know what can happen on a Halloween, a snowstorm, but fortunately, the big one missed us here. But, you know, uh, Foley and east, there was four inches of snow that, that accumulated. So we had trucks out plowing. Um, we have two brand-new snowplow drivers this year, so it was a good snowstorm to get them some opportunity to, to ride with another driver and drive a little bit with somebody in the truck with them to, to learn. Um, I tell you, it's, it's a different story plowing at three PM versus three AM. It's, it's like a whole, it's night and day difference. So it was a good snowstorm to have to get some practice before the tough winter comes, uh, later this year.
That, that snow was like, wow, there was a definite cutoff point. I mean, I was waiting for a snowplow truck to be up in our area and then call Chris and say, what the crap you doing, you know? Because there was, no, we didn't have nothing.
You were doing very good until you brought up snowplows.
Yeah.
As I've, I've mentioned to a lot of people, I'm not a huge fan of winter at all, so.
Chris, were you able to order the new two plows? Were you able to get that?
Yeah, we're, we're talking to vendors and getting some spec sheets built up. We haven't actually put the order in yet. Yeah, it was interesting. So what's, what's some of the prices we're getting, uh, and we're looking at the trucks that we replaced? In twenty years, those truck prices have doubled. So that's, that's basically what, what happened, so, um, uh, yeah.
So Chris, how are we doing on the salt?
Uh, we're doing pretty good. Uh, Maintenance Superintendent Mark Hynek just informed me, he did order six hundred more tons of salt, so, um, the way that salt works, if you remember, uh, he has to put a quota in, in April year, so they know how much to bring up the, on the barges and stuff. So we have to purchase at least eighty percent of that. I'm not sure where that'll get us, but six hundred tons will fill up our salt shed and, we've, we've got some, uh, in reserve right now, so we're, we're not worried about it. But he put in an order of six hundred tons and I'll come in, that should come in before the end of the year. We should be okay. Um, he's hauled in sand, so we're ready to mix it when those trucks start coming, coming in. And we'll, we'll be able to make it until the end of, um, I say six hundred tons, that should be within our budget for twenty twenty-four. And then when the new year starts over and we get a new salt budget, we should be able to purchase up to our, our quota within, when budget amounts, so.
Commissioner Pop?
Two things, one is that, that doubling the, the cost of the snowplow, that's not in years of my two hundred and fifty horse tractor doubled in that period of time or more. And the other part is I see this morning, they were out on County Road two during surveying.
Yes, that's right, yep. So, yeah, thank you for approving that contract last board meeting. So, yeah, they, that's good. We want them to be able to do that now before the ditches get covered up. We've surveyed before in those conditions and inevitably, inevitably you miss something. You miss a pipe that you thought was there, but you didn't see it when it covered in snow, but yeah, so I'm happy to hear that they're out there getting all those data points.
All right.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, with that, if, uh, the board is okay with it, I'd like to, uh, put a pause on the county board meeting and move it over to Commissioner Hynek on the community health board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll call it over to Benton County Community Health Board. Note that everyone's here on roll call. Approve or amend the agenda. Jaclyn, you have anything to add to the agenda today?
Yes, I do have one thing to add to the agenda today. Um, Gary from Blue Cross Blue Shield was able to join us today and follow up from our last, um, board meeting to talk a little bit about that regional dental coordinator position that they are proposing. And so he, I just looked his online here today, we could add that onto the agenda.
Okay, sure.
Okay. I'll move approval with the added of the Blue Cross Shield individual.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item one and two, what would we like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Jaclyn, Public Health Department.
Yeah, um, do you think it would be okay if we let Gary go first and then we could flip flop it?
Right.
Just in honor of his time. So I'll introduce Gary. So Gary is joining us from Blue Cross Blue Shield and, um, he's up there on the go-to meeting screen, um, I can see there. So he was gonna join us today just to talk a little bit about the seventy-five thousand dollars that Blue Cross Blue Shield is offering that could help fund a position to support working on regional dental efforts along with dental needs of Benton County residents as well. Um, I know we kind of briefly introduced it at the last, um, board meeting. Gary had connected with me right before, um, we had board the last time, and I know there were some questions, um, just some general, um, you know, questions about what would this, what could this person do or not do? So just thought we could have a little bit of information from Gary, have a little bit of discussion. I don't think you need to make a decision today unless you'd be ready to. Um, we can have Gary come back again. He said he'd be willing to come back another time this month, next month. I know they do wanna try to get a decision before too long because if we don't accept the seventy-five thousand, if, if I'm remembering right, Gary, you'd probably offer that up to another location to try to get that work in place. So with that, um, I'll just introduce Gary and then I'll pass out this agenda item. And then Gary, if you wanna go ahead and share a little bit about the work of the regional dental position.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jaclyn. Um, good morning. Uh, Chairman Hynek, um, Benton County, Benton County Board. Thank you for the time to be with you.
Thank you.
I apologize honestly for not being there, this hurts me. But, uh, I'm out of state, I'm with my favorite veterans, my father, and, uh, in North Dakota. Uh, my name's Gary Sprintson Attic. I am joined by my coworker, who's also online, Daniel Alida. We are the county and community liaisons with Blue Plus, and, uh, we're in the Government Markets Division, Medicaid, and typically what we do is meet with the Social Service and Public Health Departments and talk about the resources and benefits and incentives that we have in working with our Medicaid population. One of the things that we've really been working on and struggling is our statewide issue, it is increasing dental access across, you know, for everybody. One of the things that we wanna share about was an opportunity, and I thank you, uh, Jaclyn, for being so receptive and, and just listening. So we continue to look for ways to improve that dental access for individuals covered by the Minnesota healthcare programs. We've got several initiatives that we're implementing right now, including expanded partnership with Delta Dental, phone and dental service, Apple Tree Dental, and work to build services at the local level. So the services at the local level is where healthcare is, and we're looking to fund a dental position at the regional level to assist in a population-based dental innovations and developments. The dental innovations position is just be free, innovate, plan, manage dental expansion solutions. A host county in, uh, Region Seven W, which covers, as you know, Benton, Sherburne, and Stearns and Wright, is sought to manage this position. The county will work with the, with Blue Plus to determine a manageable regible, regional footprint. Blue Plus will fund the position for one year, barring no inter, uh, disruption of service area coverage. For example, if you said, we don't want Blue Cross in our county anymore, we probably pull the money back. Again, I stress that there's no, um, funding beyond the one year. Some very high-level goals, and keep in mind, this is your position, this would be a Benton County position, but Blue Plus would partner with the county as they set these local goals and directions. High-level objectives that we have. Number one, expanding dental access, bringing, developing, coordinating resources to your community. And number two, develop strategies, programming that would expand the utilization of dental varnish application. Three, serve as a dental ombudsman. Be that, uh, dental system, uh, referral responsibilities from Minnesota healthcare program members. Population help. What I mean by population help is that this is for anybody seeking dental help, uh, any insurance, no insurance, so not just Blue Cross Blue Shield. Develop a strong understanding of available resources, the health plans, fee for service, other dental resources. Uh, a fourth thing, innovations, education and community engagement. Working with the community, seeking assistance to expand dental services. Working with the counties to understand and utilize available services and work to expand access. And number five, what we're really hoping for right now for this extra year is to continue the momentum of the existing program. Um, so what we're offering is that seventy-five thousand dollars, and, uh, we cannot commit to expand, extending beyond twenty twenty-five due to the potential carve-out by the Minnesota Legislature. We do believe that the best way to manage this is through not carving it out, doing that close link between dental health and medical health, as well as managed care organizations, uh, our ability to pilot and fund efforts to be able to increase access. So we don't think that carving it out is gonna increase access for our employees. There are existing other positions available and a team of regional, uh, coordinators around the state. In Region One, for example, Northwest, uh, Holt County, uh, Region Three, in the Northeast, St. Louis County, Region Four, Otter Tail County, and these are doing, again, the regional, uh, supports. Region Five, Otting Morrison County, and Region Eight, we've got a project with Nobles County. Through them and collectively, there's more resources available that they've each identified and shared. They meet at least every two weeks and they share updates. They actually met this morning and Daniel was there earlier, uh, meeting with them. But this group is truly, because they're all hired with those special abilities of being innovative, creative, they're all inspiring and motivating to me, they reach, uh, dental on every level. They're working with members, um, they're working with dentists, they're working with schools and clinics. Um, we've got a lot of support from the Minnesota Oral Health Coalition. Um, we've got a lot of support from the Minnesota Oral Health Coalition. And again, I want to say, this is for population health, so no matter what insurance plan, or if no insurance plan. So we're very excited about the stories we've heard from the existing dental coordinators and the people that they've already helped. They've created this wonderful ripple effect in that, uh, it passes on and goes beyond helping this one person. We'd really like to keep the momentum going and believe that this is a great opportunity for your community, too, to work with the program through 2025. Um, just going back a little bit, I can't stress the closeness and the relationship the other dental coordinators have. Are willing, they are to share their information, best practices, across regions, and to leverage things that work everywhere. For them, they've got a lot of synergy. Uh, I'll take a quick break and just see, I've got a couple more things I want to say. Anybody have any questions at this point?
Go ahead. Any questions, Bart?
Yes. Um, the, the, for this position, how much does, uh, does somebody like this get paid?
So I did some looking into this, and, or Gary, I don't know if you'd want to take this one, but based off of one of our job descriptions, I know, um, I talked a little bit with Sarah at Wright County, who, um, if you remember Greg, who came and talked with us when we were looking at potential dental clinic opportunities. And what they ended up doing for the position was just using a job description for the, basically what would be the equivalent of our community health specialist, um, and just using that. And so I pulled numbers, roughly for salary benefits and fringe, just an estimate, would be around $71,000 for the year.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you gotta factor in, depending on what benefits elections they would select, that could be a little higher, a little lower. Um, and then, you know, you consider their laptop, computer equipment, about $2,500 estimated for that. But that would roughly be what we had. And Gary, go ahead, and if there's anything you would want to add to that with more, as you work more closely with those regional coordinators.
Yeah, uh, just a couple things I want to add. You know, one of the limitations that we've had has been the inability to see any notable actual change in the utilization of dental services between 2020 and 2023. Uh, we ran into COVID, that public health pandemic. But as we've collected data through June of 2024, the data's showing that the regional, the regions with the dental coordinators are having a positive impact. The overall statewide dental visits by Medicaid members are still decreasing slightly, but they're decreasing less in the regions of the dental coordinators. And so just for some examples, for the people with a dental visit from 2022 to 2023, the rate of visits in dental coordinator regions decreased by only 1%, while metro and greater Minnesota without one decreased by 3%. For, uh, children with a dental visit from 22 to 23, the rate in dental coordinator regions increased about a half a percent, but the metro and, uh, greater Minnesota without dental decreased by 1%. Uh, dental coordinator areas had the highest ratio of people on Medicaid to dental provider. Um, it was about 547 members to one compared to the metro area of 113 to one. And areas in greater Minnesota without a dental coordinator, 259 members to one. So across the state, our dental coordinators have interacted with more than about, just about 48,000 people since January of 2023, going through community events, parades, school outreach. Uh, dental coordinators have facilitated, joined, and supported more than about 580 events with community members regarding their insurance coverage and community stakeholders. So bottom line, we're just hopeful that you would consider entering into partnership with Blue Cross to continue this work through 2025. Help us build upon the work and further that impact, uh, and delivery of dental services for the members. The reality of addressing dental needs extends far beyond health plans and starts with local communities working together. So Danielle, did I miss anything? Danielle, can you hear me?
Can't hear ya. Yep.
There you go.
Nope. Think we might be having...
Danielle.
Yeah.
Hello, sorry.
There we go.
Thank you.
I apologize, everyone. Uh, you know, I think the one piece that I would add regarding the salary is that the, really the intent of this is to give, uh, each county that is taking fiscal responsibility the determination of how they want to utilize these funds. The salaries kind of range is from what I've seen when there's, when I'm getting budgets. Um, we have people who are more like a community health worker, and then we have some people that are working more on the policy side that have maybe a master's degree and are maybe a higher level in their salary. So really, kind of, the idea is to meet the needs of your county and your region of where, where you think that, um, this position could fall. It doesn't, there's no set place. What we have is a general thread, um, to show, listen, we think that, you know, based on what we're hearing from our members, what we're seeing in community health needs assessment, is that dental is an issue across the state. We know that it's an issue. And so really, the idea is how do you address it in your community based on what you have for dentists, for additional providers, and then being able to meet that need, really utilizing the, the people that you have. And then also, we are continuing to talk with the Department of Health and continuing to talk with all of our dental coordinators about sustainability. If your position was no longer here, what are the one things that you would want to keep going? Where can you share the work that you're doing, uh, within child protection, within adult, um, mental health services or children's mental health services? To know what the resources, resources are and to access those resources, regardless of whether that position there is not. And so we really see that this dental position is somebody really kind of beating the drum for dental, even if it's a short period of time, but to really can pull those resources together. So who that is is really, um, dependent on what makes sense for your region and county.
Mr. Chair, Gary, or any of the three of you, I, I understand the importance of the coordinator position. What I'm trying to get to is how does that person help solve the problem of not having dental offices in the region that aren't accepting MA patients?
Reaching out and creating and, uh, establishing, going and visiting with those dentists. You know, what would it take to bring somebody in? We do have resources in other regions, in neighboring counties. But just to, to, uh, try to bridge that gap, figure it out. We've got the relationship with Children's Dental Service that can bring services, uh, into the schools, uh, to assist with that. Danielle, am I off the mark a little bit? Go ahead.
Yep, you're absolutely on the mark. So that is one of the pieces. When we, they do have these coordinator meetings. They are, we have Apple Tree Dental, uh, and then also, um, Wright County Clinic. It's often involved, Community Dental Care. Some of these safety net clinics that are really set up for people on medical systems, but really some of these just needing a dental appointment. Um, and so what they do, because they're at the table, they are continuously kind of working together to increase access. The best example I can give in my area in the Northwest, um, they do not have a lot of dentists up there. So what the dental coordinator has done, has, he has been the person who has really kind of been the hub and spoke. So he's aware of, um, making sure that there are, if there are not dental clinics, that he's working with children's dental clinics to get them up there, to do mobile clinics. So they are providing care in county office buildings in Croxton, in East Grand Forks. They're going up to Lake of the Woods, uh, County in Wadette. And really just putting a dental chair wherever they can get one. And the, you know, it's not huge amounts of people, but eight people getting dental care is, can be a huge difference for those eight people. Uh, and then really that piece of making sure that those chairs are filled when they do come. So that dental coordinator is then, once they're setting up where the dentist's chair is going to be for that mobile clinic, they are also making sure that they've got a referral source. So they're reaching out to Child Protection, Children's Mental Health, the WIC offices, and saying, "Hey, we're having somebody come up. We'd love to have you see them." And so it's small pieces like that that are making a huge difference to actually bring somebody to the community to address those needs. But at the same time, they're working with community dentists to say, "What would it take?" And having conversations between us and Delta Dental, um, to say, "Here's what commercial providers are saying that they, why they don't want to take them, and how can we start building some bridges between those?" So it's, it's kind of a mix of that policy work that they're doing to make those connections, but then also really the actual access and getting those chairs filled. Because it's one thing for us to send a bus up with dental, um, in a bus, but it's not going to do anything if nobody knows there's a bus there. So it's that secondary work of being the referral source as well and creating that connection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I think one of the reasons too, um, if I may, Chair, Commissioner Gopinski, um, one of the things that I was thinking too is, you know, the reason why this may have been a good fit for Benton County was the timing and looking at a potential dental clinic. This person would be instrumental in helping to coordinate, make those connections, determine providers, assess, you know, data needs, you know, talk with potential funders or fundraisers. You know, really anything to kind of expand that, that dental clinic space and to get something that is long-term sustainable into our region. And with, you know, just very timely with, given the timeline for a potential new building.
Commissioner Gopinski? Yes. Uh, my only concern is, is, is I think it's been relayed that there's only one year of support on this. After that, does that fall back on the county?
So after that, I think what we would do is treat this like we would any other short-term grant position. We would have the position for one year, make the biggest impact that we can within that year. And now, public health could potentially look at sustainability options if that was something that you were interested in. We are, you know, often looking for other grant sources, looking for other funding sources. We do have an influx from foundational public health responsibility funding money that could potentially sustain something like this. So that could be something that we could look further into. But I think right now that, that, the, where we're at is we would look at, you know, what we can do with this in the next year. What kind of partnerships, connects could we make? What other potential funding sources or grants may be available? We could keep our eyes open for those and then make that decision when it comes closer to the end.
My...
Commissioner.
Yeah. My, my only concern on, I mean, I appreciate the grant and everything like that. That's not it. My only scare is you get somebody in here for one year.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna be looking for their next opportunity, prob, I mean, at, at the same time as...
As working.
As working.
Yeah.
So is it gonna be tough to hire for this position? Maybe Gary can help with that.
Um, what we've got is, um, what we can have to speed the process up in the meantime is that we've got existing job descriptions that other counties have used. We've got interview questions. I would volunteer, Danielle would volunteer, uh, if you want somebody to sit in on your interview team, uh, to assist with that. We can, uh, as an agency, we're ready to, just about ready to, you know, cut the money now. So you don't have, we're not gonna wait for many months. The latest you would get it would probably be by the first of the year, uh, and, and maybe even before that. But it won't take us long to get some funding to, uh, to start that process. I think that, uh, the network of people that we've had, um, rely on each other and, um, our support for each other. And maybe there's another, I mean, the, the exist, the person is still existing in Wright County right now. And they're available as a resource, I think, through the end of the year, uh, to assist. I know that they're in the process of transitioning duties. But that would be something that Jaclyn and her team could also look like, look at, is, you know, how's this going? Is this one we want to support? Do we want to shift it? But hopefully, you know, we're gonna continue to find, um, and, and seek for, uh, other sources. We just can't promise anything beyond a year right now.
I think too, just to kind of add to that, you know, we've had a lot of time, even looking like at our public health project coordinators, for example, who serve one-year timeframe periods. They do a lot of work in that one year. You know, it, it's kind of like one of those, um, positions where you do get to get to know that staff. They might see an investment in Benton County and want to come back in the future and apply for an open position. But that impact that you can make in a year with a completely grant-funded position, that's something that it's, it's, it's beneficial to our, it's only gonna bring us resources and connections. And even if that person is gone after that year, they share that knowledge with our community health specialists. They get those partnerships put in place, and that sets us up for better success and builds our capacity to continue that work, even if it, we had to cut back, you know, to just our four community health specialists.
Commissioner Pop?
So I understand, is this position a regional position, like Benton, Stearns, and Sherburne and Wright?
Yep, so they could work on, and, and you guys can correct me online if I'm incorrect. But yep, my understanding is that we would, uh, be able to host the position. They would be able to work on, and, meeting any of Benton County's dental access needs. And also would be a huge resource for the regional efforts that are going around, around dental, which are important, again, because we know that all of our residents in Benton, you know, again, cross county lines to receive services. And so it, it's one of those impacts, again, direct impacts back to our residents and supporting the region.
My question is, when you look at the size of the counties, why isn't Stearns County or Sherburne County looking at this instead of Benton County?
But that Stearns did already, didn't they?
Well, a lot of this is, is timing, right? We've been doing a lot of work around dental access. Our community health specialists have been out in the field, connecting with partners like the Regional Dental Coordinator Group, asking, "What can we do about dental in Benton County?" And that's really where this connect came from, is our community health specialists work, making those dental connects and saying, "Hey, we're really trying to get some dental needs met in our county. What resources are available?" And that's where this, um, came out of. Is just having our, our community health specialists out there, making those partnerships, and trying to identify resources to bring to us, um, so that we can try to meet those gaps in our community.
I get that.
Chair Hyden and Commissioners, I don't want to hold anything back, but, you know, what happened was is that, um, leadership has bought into this really well. And, uh, unfortunately, it was a, a late decision to continue to fund these positions. And Wright County had already made their, their decision on their budget. I knew that Benton County was interested in looking at, um, staff had contacted me earlier about some bricks and mortar thing. Is there some opportunities can we do? We're looking to expand dental. My first outreach after I, uh, wanted to confirm with Wright County was that they were no longer able to continue this position, was to reach out to Jaclyn and just say, "Hey, let's just talk. What are you thinking? Would you be interested?" And thankfully, she was. And so I did not go to Stearns or Sherburne, uh, to pursue it a little bit more, uh, and ask, but I would have. I won't see where it goes from right here, but we'd really like to continue, uh, the momentum that this group has.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could, in, as, as I look at this in the big picture, we've kind of already made this commitment that if we're moving for, if we're moving forward with the building, we've got to kind of have an answer to the taxpayers about what we're doing with this. We've pursued the dental opportunities. And to me, it's money we can put towards having a coordinator that can potentially help us through that process. I mean, as you all know, if we get to the point where we're making a decision on this building, we need to start making some decisions on this building. And that's gonna include the dental stuff.
Yep, and I think timing is everything right now. I think it's very important.
Well, I guess worst-case scenario, when a year...
Well, I was more concerned about the workload that if this position's housed in Benton County, you see the needs in Western Stearns County equally as great as what they are in Benton County. So is that going to mean that, I mean, they gotta serve the area because that's who they're supposed to serve?
But we are the host county.
We are the host county, yeah.
And we pursued it, too. The other two counties didn't pursue it.
Well, and I think, again, kind of goes back to that partnership piece of it. Even the regional efforts in, in Stearns, it's dental access is a challenge there, too. And so I think even getting a clinic in Benton County is only going to increase access regionally.
Well, let's face it, our, some of our residents are going to Wright.
Exactly. Right, many of our residents are going to Wright County. Um, and as Gary mentioned, too, I had a conversation with Sarah, the Public Health Director at Wright County, too. And she did volunteer her regional dental coordinators, who are now on staff there, to support, to mentor, to train them in, so that we can get whoever we have in this position up to speed quickly, um, and to provide those resources. She was willing to off, offer that up as well. So, um, I believe both is, are both of them still there, Gary? I think they have both Megan and Greg, Gregs, right?
Yeah, they're both still there, Gregs. Uh, yeah, they're both kind of, they're morphing into new positions. But Megan will continue in her position, uh, as well as learning other duties, uh, through the end of the year.
So like I said, you don't have to make a decision today unless you're ready to make a decision today. Otherwise, we can ask, uh, Gary and Danielle to come back again, um, if you have additional questions, so.
Any questions?
Okay, so are you, you want to work with the dentists in the area? Is that the plan?
Yep.
Okay, so you can't go to them directly to set up a plan?
Do you mean from Blue Cross?
Yeah, have a Blue Cross agreement with the dentists?
And Blue Cross does work, and, well, I don't want to speak on behalf of Blue Cross, but they do engage with dental providers quite frequently. I think the, the difference is that local public health has those community connects, and so it's getting the resource out to those individuals who are working in the community, um, with our school partners and with our, you know, our childcare, with our foster providers, our child protection, you know, all those different community partners that we're connected to and being that bridge between what they're offering to expand access and what we can offer from our capacity in local public health.
You're trying to promote a Blue Health, Blue Shield for our residents? Or, I don't, I guess I just don't understand.
Our main goal is, is just simply to work on meeting the gaps that we have in community around dental needs, oral health, dental care, um, in general. It's really unrestricted.
Mr. Chair. I think, uh, I think from my standpoint, as long as we know there's no promises moving forward, I'm, I'm, I don't think we, from my standpoint, I don't think I need to kick it down the road.
I don't either. I don't either. It, I mean, my only stipulation's gonna be that if there's no money at the end of this year, that program goes away. And there's no county fund money put towards it.
Correct. No levy, no levy money for that position. Correct. And if we can get grants, we can like hell to fulfill this position for another year, great.
Yep.
Uh, any other questions for Gary or Danielle?
Thank you, Blue Cross, for the ability to move forward on this grant dollars. It's gonna be a significant help to Benton County residents.
Yep, thank you.
And, uh, Commissioner Schlangen, I just want to make sure that you understand that it's not just Blue Plus. I mean, we're, we're helping fund it, but it's population health, everybody and anybody. We want to help increase access. Okay, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much.
Thanks, meeting you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner.
Danielle, I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you, wonderful. Jaclyn has been nice working with you so far, and we'll continue.
All right. So do you have to have a formal vote?
Do we need a, do we need a motion?
Uh, boy, probably.
Potentially, yes. I would say we do, do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to move this forward.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Monty, you're thinking? Got any questions?
Uh, no, I think at some point, you probably have two things you need to approve. Probably the grant agreement and then approving the position. So at some point, we've got to submit, you know, a position questionnaire to test it and get it created. So I could see those happening, those two things in the future.
Okay.
Turn motion.
Yeah.
Yep, so we'll do the first motion, right?
Accept the grant.
Accept the grant motion.
First motion to accept the grant.
I'll make that motion.
I have one second on that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to accept the grant. Any further discussion on that? Now I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we need a second motion for the position.
Mr. Chair.
I, I don't think you need one.
We don't, I don't think we need that.
Again, we don't really know the grade and that stuff, so I would just hold off on that one, you know.
Because if, if, if the grade comes back more than the grant, then we're gonna revisit it. And, you know, I'm not willing to have the, have the grant if it's gonna cost more than $75,000.
Well, it's very hard with our levy already set around that, so.
And we would have public health, foundational public health responsibility funding as well.
I would rather keep the public health funding in public health and not put it towards a new position.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so the last thing we have for today is just to do some public health team updates. Um, I'll keep them brief because I know we've got a meeting after the, the board meeting today. Just wanted to go through just a few things that we've been working on in the last few weeks, just a snapshot of some of the... just a snapshot of some of the stuff that our team has been out doing. Um, we'll just start with a quick public health nurse position recruitment update. So we are currently recruiting for that vacant public health nurse position. Applications have been polled and we looked at those last week. We have some interview dates slated, proposed within the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we'll have somebody here before too long. Um, recently Benton County Public Health Staff participated in, with other response teams across Minnesota to exercise a radiological emergency preparedness drill over at Apollo High School. There's some pictures on there. This drill, let me flip to the next slide here to show some of our public health team. So you can see, we had a drill that was testing procedures in place, which allowed for response teams from emergency management, public health, fire departments, law enforcement, EMS, and other providers to practice what collectively we would do if we needed to generate an evacuation from individuals in their homes due to an exposure risk that would be generated from the power plant, for example, with Sherburne County. So there's some pictures there just of the setup of the drill. So this drill was coordinated by Stearns County. And like I said, tested procedures in place, we're putting together a reception center that public would come to if we needed to evacuate those individuals and decontaminate them and their vehicles. So just a thank you to Stearns County for including us on that training session and that drill. One thing that public health has partnered in is the Minnesota Immunization Information Center texting program with the Minnesota Department of Health. This is just one really small snippet of something that we've been doing over the last year or so. And in this program, individuals receive a text message if they're delayed or behind or in need of an immunization. Just wanted to share, we're seeing some really big success rates with that. Just over a simple text message, we're seeing over forty percent of individuals going in and getting their child vaccinated after a text message. Really simple thing we can do. MDH has been the one who has been generating this, but really high success rates. So just was excited to hear that from our D P and C nurse in our last staff meeting. Last week, we participated in Project Connect. And so there's some, again, public health staff there in the photo. We had at least a hundred and fifty individuals who stopped and made connects with our public health team. We provided resources, we provided information, including information on our First Steps Family Home Visiting Program, also mental health resources, and offered dental varnishing to the community as well. Special shout out to Benton County Human Services, who also had a table there and was also providing information and resources to the public. Really, the Rivers Edge Convention Center was packed. It was a really, really busy day. Our Benton County Public Health Nurse has also continued to conduct presentations around community. So she recently presented to Foley Independent School District, where I think there was seventy-some educational staff and teachers present. She also did presentation with Central Care Emergency Department and also had did presentations with the Obstetrics Department. She will also be doing, coming up here to the eighth grade students with Foley School District, teaching in their health class, not a number program, which kind of goes through, again, developing safe relationships, looking for warning signs and providing general education. All of this work coming from a public health perspective of really giving community professionals and those within community, those, the knowledge and information to be able to address and be aware of, of risk factors to identify. We completed a site visit with our Family Home Visiting Strong Foundations Grant with MDH last week. Site visit went really well. Case loads remain above benchmarks. And overall, it was a good visit with the Minnesota Department of Health. And then really fast, like I said, last few updates. Benton County Public Health is due for strategic planning in 2024. Ours is up, so we are engaging in our 2024 through 2029 strategic planning process. Minnesota Department of Health facilitates that. We'll have our first meeting in February, I believe. At that point in time, throughout sometime the next year, I may reach out to see if any commissioners would like to be involved in our strategic planning process to give feedback and input from a community health board's perspective into our public health strategic plan. Last week on Friday, the TA grant for the City of Rice was submitted. So our community health specialists with our ship program were working with Chris in his team and also with Julie from the City of Rice to work on getting the letter of intent submitted for the TA grant to connect the City of Rice with the Bend in the River Regional Park. So that letter was submitted and it's on its way. And thank you, Monte, for also taking time away to get that approved and signed while you were on vacation. I had mentioned at our last board meeting that our WIC Women, Infants and Children Program rolled out a new computer system. That rollout went really well. And I think it's really just a testament to our WIC staff preparations in advance of the rollout, just a testament to all of the work that they did to avoid any service interruption to our WIC families. So I think a lot of, a lot of that seamless transit, transition goes to their hard work in preparing in advance for that change. And then lastly, Benton County Public Health is partnering with the Minnesota Department of Health to provide rural influenza vaccine clinics and outreach mainly to our rural farming populations. So more information to come on that in the future, but we'll be out in rural Benton County, really trying to reach as many individuals within the community there, around Benton County, to increase influenza vaccines. And so that will be primarily with a large coordination role from MDH and then public health staff involvement with outreach and support of the clinics as well. And that's it. So I thank you, and if you have anything else for me?
Thank you for the updates. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. At that time, we'll adjourn the, the board at ten, Community Health Board at ten thirty-five and turn it back over to our board chair.
All right. With that, if the board sees fit, I would like to turn it over to Commissioner Johnson on the ditch authority.
All right. Call our ditch authority meeting to order. A roll call has already been taken care of. We need to move on to approval or amendments to the agenda. Chris, do you have any changes to ditch authority?
I do not have any changes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, consent agenda item approver amend the meeting minutes of October fifteenth, twenty.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve those minutes. Is there any other discussion on those minutes? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Chris, consider the bids for ditch maintenance of CD three and CD six.
Yeah, so earlier this, this fall, I was requested to get quotes for doing ditch maintenance on recently repaired ditches, ditches three and five.
Six.
Oh, uh, where's that memo? So I received two quotes on each ditch, two for ditch three and two for ditch six. When, when submitting quotes, I asked bidders, potential bidders, to provide us with an hourly rate and the estimated number of hours to, to complete that. What we're learning is some landowners are trying to mow that buffer strip area, but then there's, there's a lot that aren't, so, which requires us to maintain it. So how long it'll take them, it's kind of unknown until they, they get out there the actual day. So for looking at County Ditch Three, the two quotes I got was from Scott's Excavating and Hellman Construction. Scott's Excavating provided the lower hourly rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, estimated about twenty-four hours to do that. That's a couple real long days or three eight-hour days to mow both sides of the, the ditch. Hellman Construction was the other bidder at an hourly rate of two hundred and forty dollars an hour, but estimating about the same amount of time. So that tells me they were both closer, looked at the project and thought it should take about two to three days to mow both sides. So my recommendation would be to accept the bid of Scotty's Excavating at the hourly rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And then we'll track the number of hours it takes them to actually mow both sides and pay them that hourly rate times the, the number of hours.
Chris, do you remember off the top of your head what we approved for maintenance assessments on CD three?
Uh, yes, it was ten thousand dollars. So conceivably, we'll spend less than that to do this, which means there would be a maintenance. If all the assessments are received next year in 2025, we'll have a balance carried over to the next year that we will talk about in August of 2025. And, and the board may choose to do a lower assessment or, or no assessment at, at that time. So yeah, this is significantly less than that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So not to jump forward, Chris, but I question why Hellman was at two forty dollars an hour for ditch three and one ninety, I think it was, for ditch six. Can you explain the difference?
I think the difference comes in, they're more looking at it at total cost. They looked at it and said to mobilize equipment, to fill up the equipment with diesel, have a guy, two guys out there or something mowing. They, they look at a total dollar amount. And then they divide that by how many hours to get us the hourly rate. So ditch six, we moved ahead here, they're expecting a lot more time out there to do that work. So their hourly rate comes down a little bit.
So Chris, in these quotes, estimated hours of eighty-eight comes in at sixty. They're going to bill what they actually did?
Yes, that's the intent. That's the way I wrote up the request for quotes is that I, I didn't have a good idea of how long it would take them. And I wanted to look, I wanted the contractors to come up with the best method to, to complete that work. So the idea is whatever the hourly rate is, we'll track the number of hours that they're actually working out there and then pay them based on that hourly rate.
And then how about what was the assessment amount on CD six?
Um, I think this is slightly over. I think we were about fifteen thousand for ditch six. So the ditch six though is one of them that I have talked to recent landowners because they received the letters for the maintenance assessment and had a lot of questions about, well, we just got, we're already paying an assessment for the repair. And that's the one where I've heard that landowners are trying to mow it. And so when they looked at it...
Hours are max, right?
Correct, so that would be the benefit. If they've already mowed it, then the contractor can skip over that area and that's less time actually out there working on the ditch. So I feel more, for ditch six, I feel more comfortable once again with Hellman, local contractor, lower hourly rate. The, the, the other one Pioneer Trees are three hundred and fifteen, you know.
Is this just for one time?
But if it does take them...
Yeah, this is like, you know, I mean...
And Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump.
No, that's fine, because it's, it makes sense. And as we knew, this was going to be a little painful going forward to get these buffer strips established. So good point. Next year might be a two-time deal.
I, you know, I think the eighty-eight hours is an extremely large amount on ditch six because we had Hellman out there last year to redo everything last fall or last winter to take out the stumps to, you know. I mean...
Well, again, it should be max.
It should be max, but you know what happens when they build a number of hours?
Well, I think the question I also have is who's going to track that, Chris?
Yes, Chris, we'll track it. Well, we, since we don't have that position that's newly created, that would be a, a job of that ditch inspector. They would be out there checking.
Somebody's got to track these hours.
Somebody's got to track it because they're going to be at eighty-eight hours otherwise.
And is the intent that they'll get down at this fall if this is approved?
Yeah, so we've also received a lot of requests to stay out of that ditch area during ditch deer season, which starts this weekend. So the intent was I'd bring it to the board today, accept bids. I'd inform the contractor. And then the Monday after deer season, they're expected to come out there and start doing on this work.
Barring weather.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
This, this ditch assessment's been the biggest pain in my butt since we did it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they, I get calls every day about ditch assessment. And I, you tell them, you got to maintain it what we done. But some of the, some of the requests are pretty big for some people. And they would say, okay, if this is the way it's going to be going forward every year, let that ditch go. I think they had no idea. They thought they paid for it once and the county's going to maintain the ditch after that.
Well, a hundred years ago, and for the last hundred years, that's what happened.
That's what happened.
That's what we got in this position.
You're right.
But, you know, five hundred dollars on this quarter section and three hundred bucks on this quarter section, they're not too happy.
You know, Mr. Chair, I, I think this also, we talked about in the past that, you know, we should take care of it for the first two years. And at that point in time, if the farmers aren't happy, they have the opportunity, hopefully, after two years, to go in there and take care of it themselves. You know, and then that would save on the assessment too, though.
It's going to take two to three years to get this maintained.
It is.
And...
But I think inevitably, though, there's going to be some landowners that just won't maintain it.
No, they will.
Whether they're renting it out or they want to keep it in more of a natural state and then sometimes forces the drainage authority to step in and say, you know, we have a policy of maintaining it. And, and unfortunately, and this is what I've explained to a lot of callers, I've talked to you, Minnesota drainage law does not allow us to break out that cost. It says it's a cost to the system. Everybody that benefits pays into that, so. And, and I think that's cause some frustration for landowners. They feel like, well, no, I, you, you did a good job through my section, so I'm going to mow right up to the edge of the ditch. But they unfortunately still get hit with an assessment, even though they're doing their part to, to maintain it.
All right, well, I think we should deal with them separately on the quotes, so.
I think that's a good idea.
What's your wishes with CD three? We'll go back to that.
I move to accept a bid on CD three.
The low.
The low bid.
So it would be, my recommendation would be to accept Scott's Excavating at that hourly rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, Commissioner Pop, that motion's fine.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, move on to CD six.
And then CD six, it would be my recommendation to accept Hellman's, Hellman Construction's bid of a hundred and ninety dollars in, an hour.
Mr. Chair, I question whether we need to be out there doing that this year after they just fixed it up last winter. You know, it must have been after the first of the year. That seems like an awful lot of money to do something that was already gone through less than a year.
In some of those phone calls, are you also hearing of the growth that's already started?
No, I haven't.
Mr. Chair, my, my question is, has anybody been out there looking at it recently?
Uh, I was out there, it was probably still in September. But, and, and I did see some landowners hadn't mowed it, but there's others where the willows had grown back up and it was, it was kind of thick. So I don't have a good quantity of where it was mowed and where it wasn't.
Chris, what kind of oversight will it take on your part to watch these hours? I mean, I think the bigger concern here is on CD six.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, we'll not be able to be out there the whole time. So maybe it's checking in with them at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day. And, um, yeah, seeing their, checking their progress or at least communicating with them at least every day and try to make a site visit every day to see their progress. I would say, I think the fact that Hellman has been through that, they're probably the most comfortable or most knowledgeable of the terrain and what it would take to, to do that. So I would back up Commissioner Johnson's comments about maximum hours. Uh, I think as a contractor, that's what you want to do is to cover yourself. And I think we always want to hope that they come in, even they admitted, hope that they come in under their total estimate. But to protect themselves, they don't want us to say, yeah, we accept the lower amount and you're not done with the job.
Commissioner Pop, I mean, you feeling better about a spring maintenance or...
Well, I guess, two things. One, I would feel better if we had our ditch person on board and we do it next spring or whenever they can, they can...
Monitor.
Monitor it a lot better. And I just don't, I just don't feel that there's that much, we can have that much growth for twenty thousand bucks or sixteen thousand bucks in that period of time.
How long is CD six again? Couple, three, four miles?
Yeah, and then there's a branch on it as well. So I think total, it was like six miles.
Mr. Chair, right now, we're speculating because nobody has been out there other than Chris, I believe, correct? You've been, they're looking at it.
Yeah, but it's probably been a month and a half.
You know, so pictures would have done us justice about this too, to see how the growth has started in some areas.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I move that we table this, are we, no, we can just table it.
Okay, there's a motion to table.
Mr. Chair, is, is there a, I suppose, never mind.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, that's going to end the discussion.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion to table CD six and a second.
Now, we can have communication though.
No, not on the table.
No.
Not on a table. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. CD six is tabled.
All right, then we will proceed with the mowing of the buffer strips on ditch three and, um, yeah, no, no further work on ditch six at this time.
Okay. How about update quickly on CD fourteen?
Uh, yeah, so the, the fifteen-day comment period ended last Friday for the wetlands. So the wetland credits are being withdrawn and we have approval to, uh, to do that work because now the wetland credits are withdrawn. So Hellman should be expediently working on that, so.
Great.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I got a question on CD four. I've been getting quite a few phone calls on that about the assessments and people sending pictures going, trees in the ditch, what's the plan? You know, I'm getting assessed for money that he's doing anything.
So that's a good question, Commissioner Kaminsky. So Chris, we haven't talked much about our plan on these county ditches that are in disrepair. We haven't done the repairs yet. We're going to move forward with a maintenance.
Sure.
So is the maintenance getting ahead of the repair? You know what I'm saying? Because we're going to, unless, I don't know the status of C D four, but is the maintenance not even going to come near fixing C D four's potential repair issues?
C D four is, yeah, interesting. It's a rather short length of ditch. The actual limits of the ditch is completely within one landowner's property, but the drainage area is larger, and so there's landowners outside of where the ditch actually passes that are contributing to it, so. And I think the intent was the maintenance assessment was to start to build up a fund so we can do repairs on that ditch and draw from that fund and not hit these landowners with these large assessments like the ditch, like the landowners along six and primarily six and three that we've completed because we haven't assessed on nine and fourteen.
We don't have a valid repair petition on C D four, do we?
Ah, no, but we don't have to wait for one. And I think that's the way we've all started operating, is not waiting till there is a repair petition. Once again, it goes back to that court case that said that you shall maintain your ditches and the costs get assessed to those benefiting from that drainage system, so.
Commissioner Pop?
How about C D ten? That's the one that I'm getting all the calls from.
Yeah, so that's the one we do have a valid repair petition on. I, we have a draft, we had a draft repair report that identified wetlands along that length of ditch. So we learned is that there's a lot of type one-two wetlands along that ditch. Then the statute changed the same, about the same time we finalized a draft repair report that said that drainage projects, even repair projects, are no longer exempt from mitigation regardless of type of wetland. So that's caused us to relook at that and come up with numbers. If we do a full-depth repair again, what are the wetland impacts along that ditch?
More than the benefit.
Working with Houston still, they're supposed to be, I'm expecting a draft report still yet this week to review. And then I guess we have an obligation to start coordinating with our L G U on that repair report. But we still need to bring that final repair report back at a hearing to discuss.
Mr. Chair.
So some of the assessments will go for the assessments and the benefited acre report, right? That we did on ten?
Yeah, so, yeah, because once again, all the engineering work is a cost to the system.
Right.
Um, so payment of buffer, buffer strips is part of that, too.
And I think we could do a better job of when we send out the letter for the assessments, that that was part of the assessment. I mean, they're saying, okay, you know, it was on County Road four, right east of County Road one, about a mile and a half.
Yeah, that's where it crosses.
They haven't done anything, you know, and here, we're going to, we're expected to pay, you know, six hundred bucks for this farm and four hundred bucks for this farm. And they go, what, we haven't done anything, why do we have to pay? They need to, we need to explain that better.
Yeah, and also, there's a lot of information on our website that's been up there for a lot of, a few years now that I think answered a lot of questions. I mean, it points a lot back to one oh three E in statute, why we're doing these things.
Just for my own clarification, so there's maintenance assessment dollars, and there will be maintenance assessment dollars in the account. When and if we repair that ditch, those dollars can be accessed towards the repair.
That's from my understanding, yeah, that, yeah, those can go for paying for the system, basically.
Okay.
Establishment, maintenance, and administration of the ditch.
Well, it does, but, I mean, I see the pictures. I sent them over to you, and the one individual said, it's just a short ditch, how come I can't go in and clean them, all that tree out?
Time to look up one oh three E and-
I get that point, but, you know.
Yeah.
It, yeah.
Do you have any idea how many benefiting acres off the top of your head for C D four? You said it goes through one landowner, but.
Yeah, I don't off the top of my head. We have those numbers based on the viewers' reports.
What's the landowner it goes through?
A Rukowski.
Okay.
Because I've talked to him and his brother both on that. And I agree. I've talked to hundreds of people after these letters went out. I have some suggestions, maybe better letters in the future. I think it caused a lot of confusions because if there's any, the letters stated, if there's any questions, call county highway engineer. So I think some even automatically equated these to road ditches and thought, why are you charging me for the road ditches? Don't already pay taxes. So had to explain that. But there's enough people that were fired up enough that I think are pursuing abandonment, which I've just, I've recommended that maybe they should, they should seek out legal counsel to make sure they know the implications of that. I think because drainage law exists, you got one oh three E, one oh three G in statute, almost right next to each other, deals with the wetland and stuff. There are some things that can be accomplished, I think, as a county ditch that you maybe naturally couldn't accomplish if it's no longer a county ditch and you're subject to Bowser and D N R if it's a public water. So that's where I say, it sounds great, abandon the ditch, then you're no longer under assessments, but make sure that's what you actually want to do as a landowner, and you can still accomplish what your drainage goals if it's no longer a county ditch.
They cover themselves all the time.
We heard last night on the extension, one person made the comment, well, I got to pay my assessment on C D six. And, I mean, I guess we should have never, I would have never went forward with the assessments on C D six until we know whether we're going to clean it or not clean it. This was not the right way to go about this.
Well, we all can look at that and go, eye to eye.
C D six we repaired.
Yeah, but C D ten I meant.
Oh, ten, yeah.
But I think, I thought some of the concern was that once we came back at the final hearing for the six and people saw these large assessments, the goal was to start building up these maintenance accounts so you're not hitting people with these large assessments all at once. You have a smaller assessment over multiple years. I mean, you look back at the viewers' report, that's what people, if you recall, come to those hearings and say, I got this letter from H D O viewers that said my assessments were this, now it's three times that. And you look, well, yeah, H D O viewers was assuming a hundred thousand dollars cost. The repair came in at three hundred thousand, so, yeah, you're right, it is three times the amount.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pop? Well, the other part is that the assessments are being assessed before the work is, any work's at, before any work they actually see.
Yeah.
If, you know.
The other flip side is that we've had to borrow from the general levy to do that, so.
I got a whole list of things. I keep telling them what we're doing. Bottom line is, they got to write a check or it's going to be assessed on their taxes.
Yeah, right, that's right. All right, so, any other updates?
Ah, that's all I have for them.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Yeah.
Could you maybe do a call with me to one of the landowners? I think it happens to be one of them that is all on their land.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
All right.
All right, anything else?
And I think that, just for the record, that is not in my district.
Do you need to go back and forward, Commissioner Pop's number two?
No, I'll handle it. I got this one, Ed.
All right, ditch authority adjourned at ten fifty-seven. Turn it back to the board chair.
All right. Why don't we go with Commissioner meeting updates?
I can start if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Try to keep it short and sweet. It's been three weeks since we've met, so a few things have happened. October seventeenth, planning commission meeting, October twenty-first. Ed and I met with Roxanne and Brian in regards to true county concerns that we heard at our last board meeting. Were able to work through that. I think some of that came out of the City of Rice, and I think that's gotten resolved, so can move ahead with that. Of course, that same day, we had our cow with human services. And again, I was glad to be on the tour. Thank you, Sandy, and that set up the tour to Riverdale. So that was in Lincoln, that was good to be at. Twenty-third, I had a Highway twenty-three board meeting. Twenty-fourth was a triple day, B P quarterly meeting that morning, Tri-County Solid Waste and Foley Care Board that evening. On the thirtieth, Commissioner Pop and I were out at Alexandria for a Tri-County Solid Waste and Pope Douglas joint board meeting. We also toured the Burner and the H H W afterwards. And then yesterday, I had a visit with Nick and Drews here in Foley for business retention with B P. So that was good. And then Commissioner Pop and I were at the Extension Committee meeting last evening where we did our annual reviews at the end of the meeting for the staff, so it had to be a long meeting. That's all I had. Thank you.
Candidate forum?
Candidate forum, yeah, that was fun, too. Did you do it? I did, yeah.
Okay. Well, I had a lot of the same ones that he did. I did go to the S W C D meeting for them, kind of things as normal. Then we had the B P meeting in the Tri-County at the same day. B P Board was after our quarterly meeting. They got a lot of good things going, again, a lot of projects that are, a lot of projects that have went from in the pipeline to active, is I think is all Amanda puts them. Then on the twenty-eighth, I had a MICA executive meeting. We are going to go out for a new executive director. I think we're going to look at partly on D D A for doing that.
Did I understand you that the current one went to the University of Minnesota?
No, he went to higher ed. I don't know where he went. I don't, I don't know if that letter, if it's, the announcement's been out yet.
Who was that?
Or not. Matt Mossman. And then last night, we had the extension meeting.
But that must be why there's a special MICA administrator meeting Friday, because Matt's leaving?
Yeah. He announced them.
Say what the meeting was for, but, okay. It's going to be a big loss.
What?
It's going to be a big loss.
Yeah, they think it's a hard position to fill.
Yeah.
The qualifications seem to be pretty hard. Salary seems to be pretty good in my book, but we'll see.
All right, you good?
Yep.
Okay, I'll go next. Actually, I was on vacation again. But we met with the cultural team, very good discussions. And then the only other one I attended, thank you, Sandy. Sandy and I approached the City of Saw Rapids for a meeting about getting some more rooms for Brendan Cummings' care facility, being that Catalina Care closed down in Saw Rapids. So it was a very good meeting, actually. Thank you, Sandy, for joining me on that one. That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Shlongin?
I had the Tri-Cap meeting, and we were a little short on board members, so we had to do stuff online to finish up. Epic, I had the St. Cloud Community College and for the high school students to do all their opportunities for employment and job careers. R S V P, and I think that was it.
Okay. Mr. Chair, one more thing. So we had our state board meeting last Friday, and we went through the policies that were there. The number one policy is the environment and natural resource solid waste. It was the top one, I believe, on seven of the ten districts. So and the second one was children's mental health. I think that was second. So we're going to meet again on the twenty-second of November, and the policy chairs are, and we're going to bring forward the four or five that we think should be on the ballot in our annual conference.
Okay, the tours were great. We also, the employee engagement was awesome. I think a lot came out of that. Can you check your calendar on that date we talked about, the nineteenth, I think it is?
Let's, and we'll talk to you about it.
We'll talk about that. The other one that we had just yesterday was a potential talking about a lobbyist or local lobbyist that has gotten or has received a lot of money for other counties and for road projects, as well as other things.
Correct, yeah.
So I think there's going to be some dialogue with that brought to the county board and see what we can do. The old saying is it takes money to make money, right?
Did you talk to Chris on that?
Yeah, Chris and, yep, it was the same individual.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I was really impressed with him. I don't know about you.
Yeah, so he brought up a colleague yesterday, and not just road and bridge projects, there's other funding opportunities maybe, too.
It's intriguing.
Even human services, I mean, they're across the board.
I think it could be a very good situation.
That was a very good meeting.
Hey, my hearing, we might want to have that issue on the future board agenda?
Yep, absolutely.
Because I did see the estimate came in from that firm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Also, I forgot to bring up the A P O. I'll be going out to D C with the A P O. So that'll be on the week of the eighteenth.
Is A P O helping you with that?
Ah, not right now, so I'll have to do it. If the board wants to look at that at the next board meeting, we can do that.
Yeah, put that on the agenda.
Marty, can we get that on the agenda, then?
And then the last thing is, is I was approached for, to do the A M C Public Safety Director position, so I got to look at that option.
And the chair?
The chair, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's great.
You got to get elected tonight first before you do that.
Oh, yeah, true, true. Good luck on that, too.
And me and you have had this conversation already.
Yes, I called Commissioner Pop on that, and it's, I don't know, I think I'll end up putting in for it. There's a chance where we could have two Benton County Commissioners as chairs of the-
Oh, I will be gone.
Oh, you'll be gone.
I'll be gone in December.
Oh.
My vice chair takes over, so.
There is an opening on the M C I T board also that I'm considering.
Okay, well, good luck.
Got to get through tonight first.
Yeah, all right. With that, we'll go to, any meetings coming up, cows?
Only one potential, and it's just if anyone plans to attend. The G S D C All Investor Mean is this week, Thursday, the seventh, at eleven thirty A M. Anyone interested in attending, then let's add it to the, so again, G S D C All Investor Mean at Harvester Square, eleven thirty A M.
Be a little bit late because I have a meeting until noon, but.
Move for approval of the cow?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second for the cow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right.